Followed by the invocation led by Councilman Taylor.
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with each of us this evening as we conduct our city's business. May you guide our minds and our souls for the betterment of our community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible) ...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mr. DeSoma?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mr. Lyle?
Here.
Mr. Reeser?
Here.
Mr. Springs?
Here.
Mr. Ailer?
Here.
Mr. Springs?
I make a motion that we suspend the reading of the minute.
Seconded by Mr. DeSoma.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. DeSoma?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lyle?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move to administrative reports. Mayor is not here this evening, so we'll jump right to serve Safety Director, Mr. Dotts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council and guests. Just a few items to report this evening. We've been busy doing firefighter interviews last week. Civil service met yesterday, I believe, to certify a new list. We're searching for our last candidate to fill the opening for the Safer Grant. So, if your chief this one might have one more information on that for council if you need it. Also wanted to let you know that the local county land bank opened bids for a demolition program funded through the state, which the city has thirteen properties in. That was open last week. They're gonna meet again next Tuesday to review those bids and make a recommendation, so hopefully we'll have some good news and seeing some derelict structures come down in the next few months. We currently have an opening at our wastewater sanitation department, so if you know anyone that's interested, have them come by, pick up an application. So, we're actively seeking to fill that vacancy. And then the last thing, I just wanted to touch on, I'm sure everyone's aware of the forecast for the next few days, we'll get somewhere between zero and eight feet of snow, so... Just as we're out and about, be patient with our crews. We will get the streets cleared as quickly as we can. You know, we don't, those guys get a lot of work done with a few guys, so rest assured they'll be out and we'll get them cleaned up, but just as a matter of how fast the snow comes down and how quickly they can get to it. So, we always see the primary roads first, residential streets second, so just be patient and we appreciate it. So, look at that on my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Dotts, any questions or comments for Mr. Dotts? Seeing none, we'll move to Law Director, Mr. Stolling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Good evening, guests. We have two ordinance, or one ordinance and one resolution, two pieces of legislation, our first two of the year, so we've been off to a slow start in terms of pieces of legislation being presented, but a couple of things that you'll see coming forward. We would request, the Planning Commission met this evening, and they've approved the, which is a first step in a process, approved the annexation of real estate owned by Levan Investments, located off of Ludlow. It's the land just to the south of the current middle school. They've approved the legislation to, or the request for annexation, and set a zoning as the R3C, which is residential...
It's R3.
R3, oh, excuse me, R3, which is, but add to that.
Multi-family residential.
So, multi-family residential, which can also be single-family housing as well. So, potential, you know, mixed housing type development. And the next step, Mr. President, would be to set a public hearing before council, thirty days out from the hearing, which would be, I think, put us on February twenty-eighth, our second meeting in February, to, for you as the council, to consider the setting zoning as part of that annexation. One other thing, we actually, one resolution tonight is for our community reinvestment area. Part and parcel with annexation, under our current community reinvestment area, the newly annexed land does not automatically subject itself to the CRA, unfortunately. And so, we're gonna have to go through a process to identify lands that are currently being annexed or that we expect to be, I think there are some other applications pending, to put under a CRA. And that is, of course, our tax, property tax abatements on new and improved structures. Does not change property taxes on existing improvements or the land. So, I expect to see more on that in the upcoming weeks and months. So, that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stolling. First order is that we will establish to have a special hearing on the, for the purpose of establishing zoning for the proposed annexation. That hearing will be February twenty-eighth at seven PM. And we'll ask the clerk to publish the appropriate notice in the newspaper. Any question? I'm sorry?
Seven PM.
Seven PM. Any questions or comments for Mr. Stolling? Seeing none, we'll move to Audit Report, Mr. Brentlinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Good evening, guests. Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Brentlinger. Any questions or comments for Mr. Brentlinger? Seeing none, we'll move to... I saw the police chief out there. Chief Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, believe it or not, we're moving up on Class 11 of the Citizens Police Academy, which starts next month. Just here in a couple of weeks. It's a full class, one of our biggest ones yet, and we're excited to have twenty-one of our local residents that are gonna be partaking in that class. We're also working our way through another group of candidates for positions for police officer. They're in the middle of testing now, and we should be able to certify this list probably sometime in early February or mid-February, which will put them on the eligibility list, and then we'll continue to hire as we have vacancies. And just on another note, and I'll be talking more about this as the day gets closer, to remind everyone, but the governor did sign into law a new cellphone law for drivers, so make yourselves aware of that law, and we'll be putting more out publicly on that, just to give advance notice as possible, but it'll go into effect ninety days from the day you sign it, which puts it in April.
Any questions? Any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fire Chief, Chief Fissell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report when I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions or comments for the chief? Seeing none. Is Mr. Bischoff here tonight? There he is.
I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bischoff. Chris Myers, Parks and Rec, is he here at all? Nope, that's okay. Mr. Walrath, Economic Development? No? I think it's his birthday. Oh, is he? Well, that would explain that. Birthday vacation. Okay, that concludes our administrative reports. We'll now move to reports from standing committees. Finance Committee, Mrs. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just have one ordinance on for this evening. This is the resolution for the Community Reinvestment Act project application that Law Director Stolling mentioned. This is for the parcel where the hotel, proposed hotel, beside the urgent care, there's a TAN's urgent care, that property. And I just want to mention that it doesn't include the, any exemption from the property tax itself, which actually, I think it now will be property that is not exempt anymore, but the improvements are what the exemption will be for our tax payment, so. And we'll be asking for that to, for approval tonight. Also, I was gonna mention that we'll start having our finance meetings at seven o'clock instead of the six-thirty start time, but it will depend on if we have hearings and things, so maybe the next meeting will be at seven, and then the one after that will be six-thirty, because we have a hearing at the end of the month of February, but, so, I, we may not change it yet, but...
Sorry, Jamie, yeah.
That's, that's all right. I, we'll have those throughout the year anyway, so, but I was doing that so that I didn't have to always make the announcement for the change, but I make them certainly do that. That ends my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
And Mrs. Baker. Rules Committee, Mr. Reeser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules Committee is going to meet on February four first at four-thirty. That's a Wednesday, and we're gonna be discussing health-based spatial coverings at meetings and any, and recording the meeting by the public. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Reeser. Street, or, excuse me, Safety Committee, Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Utilities Committee, Mr. Springs.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Springs. Streets Committee, Mr. Ailer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one resolution on tonight. It's R23 Day Show Two. It has to do with the city's sharing the bridge inspection, and it's no cost to the city. It's an annual resolution for bridge inspection. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer. Audit Committee, Mr. DeSoma.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have no report.
Thank you, Mr. DeSoma. That concludes the reports of standing committees. We'll now move to the legislative portion of our meeting. We're gonna skip the communications from citizens portion, and we'll move to the legislative portion. That will be ordinances for, and resolutions for first reading.
A resolution approving Belle Fountain Community Reinvestment Area Project Application of Belle Fountain Hospitality LLC and authorizing the city to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with said applicant, and directing the housing officer and city auditor to take all necessary actions to effectuate the tax exemptions granted therein.
Mrs. Baker?
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. DeSoma?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
I need to abstain because I'm one of the investors in the project.
Abstention is noted and accepted.
Mr. Lyle?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the city of Belle Fountain to participate in an Ohio Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program Services and authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute all documents relevant to the program services.
Mr. Ailer?
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. DeSoma?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lyle?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances and resolutions for first reading. There are no ordinances for second reading, and there are no ordinances for third reading, so that will conclude our legislative agenda this evening. We'll gonna jump back to communications from citizens. If there's anybody who wishes to address council, please approach the lectern, state your full name and residential address, and we'll proceed from there.
Hello, my name is Diane Hager. I'm at eleven oh five Milligan Road, and I see a lot of familiar faces here tonight. But what I would like to address, as a parent to grandparent, I was appalled by the flow of the Belle Fountain Christmas parade that included a drag float. My husband and I had young grandchildren with us, and I did not appreciate them asking what that float represented. One resolution to the drag queen being displayed in public would be to make an amendment to our City Ordinance Number Eleven, which is planning and zoning. Under eleven seventy-seven, which is adult entertainment, it could be added to eleven seventy-seven point zero-two definitions, with specifically naming any public display which could be seen by underage citizens. Then, under eleven seventy-seven oh-two, letter F, adult material number one, posters and advertising could be included. I have an article here from Epic Times, and it's dated last week, that the state, states that their, state of Arkansas is preparing a bill to label drag shows as adult entertainment, which will prohibit them from public property or in areas that can be seen by children. We can and should do this for our city. There's no reason we can't. It's right there, and if anybody would like to see it, Mr. Reeser, if you'd like to see the article, since you're ahead of the rules, I would be happy, or, Mr. President, if you would like to see it first, that's fine, but I think this is something we should consider now, because I really don't wanna see it repeated, and it would also cover other things that would not be in the parade that we don't allow now, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of council, Mr. President, guests. I'm Chandler White. I reside at sixty-five East William Street, Apartment Nine in Delaware, Ohio. I'm a proud member of the queer community. Over the history of community, we've been attacked, and now we're seeing this in Belle Fountain. I grew up in a little rural town right outside Marysville, Ohio.
I'm sorry. Miss, that was, I'm sorry, I'm reserving your time. That was Chandler...
Gay people like friends, white like the color.
White.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I grew up in a little rural town right outside Marysville, Ohio. This town was so small that we used the next little town over zip code. Growing up, I didn't know what it was to be gay. Hell, I didn't even know what gay people were. There was zero representation in my town, my school, media, et cetera. I always knew I was different and never felt the same as everyone else, but I couldn't find that piece that fit the puzzle. The Olive Tree allows for folks to find their space in their community. It helps the queer children who grew up in rural areas like I did to have representation. Imagine growing up in a society where you don't feel at home. Imagine growing up and no one around you is like you. Imagine growing up being called the F slur, a sissy, a queer, a center, and so much more. Imagine being hated based on who you are and who you love, instead of the content of your character or the love in your heart. This is no way for anyone to live or to be treated. This issue before us today is not metropolitan or rural. It's about civil rights. Drag is an art form. Many who rally against drag queens use the same and outdated hateful tropes that put gay people as those that groom children. I want you to look at the statistics and tell me where the facts are. We know this is not true. There have been more fathers, faith leaders, closeted politicians that fall into this category, of which there have been no drag performers to fall into this perversion. The same folks who are using their bigotry to attract, attack drag queens are the same people who sexualize their daughters in child pageants, take their young sons to Hooters, and enjoy drag on television. If you've seen any Madea movie, you have enjoyed drag. If you've watched Robin Williams and Mrs. Doubtfire and Howl Out, you have enjoyed drag. If you have seen SNL skits like The Church Lady, you have enjoyed drag. Drag has always been around us and a part of our culture. Back before when we were allowed to take place in male-dominated fields like acting, men played the female parts. That is drag. However, we never saw an uprising of folks who were upset about those drag performances. This is because the difference is now between hate and ignorance. If you don't like when gays do drag, reassess the other areas in life where you have been okay with it, and think, what is the difference when it comes to this situation? Blonde Vanity is a friend of mine. Outside of drag, she's become a good friend. She's an amazing performer and a lovely human being. She's shown me and my husband Dylan love and acceptance. Blonde, Tyler, and the Olive Tree family have helped us have much needed joy in our lives. They have taught us to laugh, love, and accept everyone for who they truly are. The people of Belle Fountain need to take note here. Earlier in my remarks, I said, growing up, I didn't know what gay people were. Now, while that was true at the time, I was wrong. Gay people are my aunt, my brother, my cousins, my friends, importantly, myself. Everyone knows someone queer, and it's often until it's someone that you love that people don't accept it. Now, I ask yourselves, is your love conditional or is it unconditional? Those who follow Christ but use his words to justify hate, ask yourselves, if your God of love would want you to hate your gay son, your gay sister, your gay brother, or your gay friend, or your gay neighbor. The Bible says, treat your neighbor as you want to be treated. Are you treating your neighbor as you want to be treated? The true God of all people is love. The thing that brings people together and humans of all kinds is love. Delaware, oh, sorry, I'm from Delaware. Belle Fountain, council, and members of the community, I ask you to show love, allow people to be who they are, and help us pave the way for the queer youth of tomorrow. Thank you.
Sarah Lewis, seven six six East Columbus. I live a pretty standard life. I'm forty years old. I've been married for going on ten years. I'm the mom of a beautiful eight-year-old girl, whom is a second grader at Belle Fountain Elementary School. I work for Logan County Social Services, for Logan County Job and Family Services. I'm a homeowner here. I coach softball, and I coach soccer by way of Belle Fountain, Belle Fountain City Parks and Rec. I like to watch throwback episodes of Full House when there's nothing on TV. And the reason why I'm boring you with the mundane details of my life is not to bore you to death today, but to show you that I'm no different. I just happen to be a lesbian. I didn't grow up here. I grew up in a farm community nearby, and as a high schooler, I remember riding through Belle Fountain on a band bus, believing this to be a forgotten city as these downtown facades were covered in dilapidated plywood. This forgotten city is no longer, and Belle Fountain has seen a beautiful growth, and I stand here today as a proud community member. My wife and I have chose to make community art, to make the community of Belle Fountain our home, and raise our daughter here so that she may benefit from the beauty and safety that a small town has to offer. A beauty that is not limited to cis, straight, white individuals, but to everyone. I would be wrong if I failed to mention that in the two years I've lived here, myself and my family have been welcomed to Belle Fountain with open arms, and we have the most amazing neighbors, and we have forged beautiful lifelong friendships here with so many people in this community. We've gained amazing allies from families who have, who have abandoned their archaic ways of thinking. After realizing the way that I live is truly no different from them, I just happen to be a woman married to a woman. And unfortunately, queer culture being represented in a Christmas parade has led to queer people in this community of Belle Fountain having violence and being subjected to hateful rhetoric. There was an organization in Belle Fountain that circulated a video online where a, there was a literal call to war against us, urging its members to pick up their arms and battle like American soldiers, adding that we're a threat to the foundation of traditional family between one man and one woman. Instead of addressing this heat towards a class of citizens in this community, energy has been placed towards appeasing the naysayers so that they can mark themselves safe from a drag queen on a jet ski. On January tenth, an individual stood before this city council and said that Belle Fountain is their chosen home, and that they came here to escape the metropolitan lifestyle, specifically mentioning their discomfort regarding the presence of queer representation in the Christmas parade, and describing our lifestyles of private matter. While the proprietor of the Olive Tree did not choose Belle Fountain, he grew up here. As a child, he skinned his knees in these parks, and as a child, he prayed in your very churches and attended your very schools. He sat in your pews, and he prayed, and he is who he is. The perceived metropolitan agenda did not create him. The city of Belle Fountain did, and he, along with all queer people, needs to be able to peacefully share this space with you without fear. We are entitled to be who we are. Being queer is not a private matter, and I refuse to live silently in this community. My desire to be rooted is no different than yours. My moral values that I hold and instill in my child echo yours. If a drag queen on a Christmas float was an undercover objective to sexualize children, I can promise you, with every fiber of my being, I would not be standing here right now. The underlying outcry is a tastefully dressed drag queen in a Christmas parade is that a gay man is dressed in drag, and a gay space are sharing a place with you in this community. That is called bigotry, and that is categorically defined as hate. All citizens of Belle Fountain have the right to be represented at a Christmas parade in any public situation or celebration for that matter. Queer representation matters in every community, and it specifically matters in Belle Fountain. Children and adults have taken their lives to avoid being who they are, and for the sake of their memory, I refuse to closet myself so someone can feel comfortable running away from a metropolitan lifestyle that furthers them from the proximity of queer culture. I spent my teenage years asking for God to take the burden of being a lesbian off my shoulders, only discovered that the God you pray to designed me the way that I was created and in his image, and as I see it, the chosen lifestyle here is to hate or to love, and I would love to see this council and this city adopt a culture and a lifestyle of love. Queer inclusivity and diversity here matter, and I will not stand silent. There are members of this council that know how to reach me personally, and if we wanna know in this community how to create an inclusive and diverse culture for our citizens and for our children that are growing up, you can contact me directly or any board member of Extending the Branch. I appreciate your time.
I actually have not spoken at a city council meeting since I was in Boy Scouts, so this is really exciting. Hi, I'm Blonde Vanity, you guys. I came in the...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You need to state your legal name and your address.
Ben Lewis, and can I give you my address perhaps after more privately, for obvious reasons?
We don't. It's...
Five twenty-four Salisbury Drive, Paloville.
Thank you. You may proceed.
So, I took a bunch of notes, but in the effort of not going over the same things, I just thought maybe I would start asking you guys a question. How many of you have ever met a drag queen before?
This is not a question and answer session, Mr. Lewis.
Well, I graduated from a high school in a rural community as well, about forty-five minutes outside of Cleveland, and I grew up not having a lot of visibility and thinking that I hated Ohio. It wasn't till I actually moved to Columbus and saw that there was so much more that this state had to offer, that I fell back in love with it. And that's why I fell in love with this community too. This community has so many people that are part of this community, part of just being Ohioans in general, and we have so much more to offer. You guys have so much more to offer here than you even know. Essentially, I would just like you to know that I went to OSU. I'm a normal person with dreams and goals and ambitions just like everyone else. I'm not like a degenerate or here to corrupt anyone's children or anything like that. Like they said, it's an art form. It's entertainment, in addition that it was just trying to celebrate the Christmas holiday. Thank you guys so much for having us here and for being so welcoming to this community. I've seen some of your guys' faces before, and I've never had a problem with you and with any of you. And I feel accepted here. I feel like Belle Fountain is one of my hometowns as well, so thank you so much for doing everything for us, and I wanna be here to continue to do everything for your rise as citizens as well. Thank you.
My name is Samson Bates, S-A-M-S-O-N, Bates like Kathy. Or Norman, if you'd rather. I live at one twenty-six West North Avenue, Apartment Seventy-two, Ada, Ohio. Good evening, council, and thank you for your time. As previously stated, my name is Samson Bates. I'm a proud transgender man and a Belle Fountain native, born and raised. I'm here to share my concerns about recent events. As those of, as those of us here know, there was a drag queen in the Christmas parade. And we also know this has caused an extreme divide in our town. There's been a great deal of hatred and misinformation permeating. I attended the parade and saw nothing inappropriate or provocative. I have yet to see these tickets or pamphlets that some have claimed were being passed out, targeting children in an attempt to sexualize them. I'm not gonna spend all my time occupied with any drag or drag performers. I am more concerned overall about bigotry. While drag is an incredibly important part of queer history and queer culture, it isn't the be-all and end-all to our community. We love, we work, we curate families and friendships, we shop at the local shops, and we send our children to the local schools. We coach and we teach. We even attend some of the local churches. We are contributing community members like everyone else, and we belong here. Some people may see our town as a diamond in the rough, perfect for instilling small-town values into their children, but I have seen countenance friends leave this town because those same small-town values told them they were sick, deranged, and wrong for wanting to live authentically. I would rather live in a place that people aren't afraid to call home than a place that people seek out because they believe they are safe from so-called metropolitan beliefs. I feel the recent attack on drag is a rerouted attack on queerness in general. It is no longer acceptable to be publicly homophobic, but under the guise of protecting children, you can call someone a groomer and a pedophile. You can veil transphobia with the phrase "man and dress." There have been suggestions of a separate parade or rules to not allow another float with a drag queen. In my opinion, such an action would only serve to feed into the hatred of the division. It would send a message to all of the queer people who live here that they are second, less than. For the past several years, there has been an extreme focus on rebuilding the small businesses of our town and saving for buildings. I would love to see that same energy put into rebuilding relationships and saving our people. Thank you.
Okay. I'll keep mine short. My name is Dylan Parks. I also live at sixty-five East William Street in Delaware, Ohio. I just wanna say that I am a married, twenty-one-year-old queer person that grew up in a town not so different from here in Newark, while the other side is for Ohio. And it would, it does feel so nice, and it would have felt so nice to have a place like the Olive Tree in a space like that. I feel obligated to come here and show my support because people like us in the queer community are simply trying to exist, express ourselves, and just live life comfortably in our own skin. It's not about grooming children in a certain way. It's about giving the same support and love that everybody in this room seeks out and wants to receive every day. We are embracing this town. We want to continue to do so. Rural, small town, metropolitan, whatever type of city, we certainly have a place in the community, and I would love to see it continue that way. Thank you. we certainly have a place in the community, and I would love to see it continue that way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brandy Powers, three five zero five County Road Thirty-two South, Belle Fountain. I have an interesting story of today. My grandma has lived in this community for eighty-nine years, and I go over and fix my grandma lunch every day. My grandma belongs to a church here and has. My grandma is extremely religious, has not touched a drop of alcohol, has not smoked anything. Straight down the line, religious. So I showed her a picture today, and I showed her a Christmas float of Blonde Vanity. I said, "Grandma, what do you think of this?" And she goes, "Oh, that's beautiful." And I said, "It is, isn't it?" She goes, "Yeah, what is that?" She goes, "Is that the Christmas parade in town?" I said, "It is." I said, "But there's a huge breakfast about it, and I'm going to the city council tonight." She said, "Well, why?" I said, "Because Blonde Vanity is a drag queen." She goes, "Oh, that's the shows you take your cousin to." My four-year-old cousin took her to the first drag show in Belle Fountain. And her reply was, "After we seen the drag show, there was no inappropriate language. There was no vulgar actions." Aspen is her name. She looked at me. She said, "Brandy," she said, "are those boys?" And I said, "Yes, they are." And she goes, "Well, is that their job?" And I said, "Well, sometimes. That's their job. They work doing that." She goes, "Well, do they like-- is that their hobby?" And I said, "Yeah." I said, "Is there anything-- are you okay with that?" She said, "Well, yeah." She goes, "I like people." And I was like, "Exactly." Kids are taught hate, and it's ridiculous. There's no place in this world for hate. We have so much more that we have to solve than what someone is or does with their life. As long as they're not hurting anyone, why does it hurt you? It doesn't. It doesn't. And so when I told my grandma that I was coming here to talk, she said, "Well, tell them a story." My grandma was part of the Andrews Sisters, not the famous ones. I'll go ahead and say that now, not the famous Andrews Sisters. But she performed at the Holland Theater with her sisters many years ago. They performed multiple times as a family Christian group. Her dad performed before her. And she was like, "You want to know something I've not told anyone? Because I guess it just didn't matter." I said, "Sure, Grandma." She goes, "My dad used to perform in a dress with these really pretty boots, and everyone just loved it at the Holland Theater." My grandma's eighty-nine. How long ago was that? Things haven't changed. It's just people don't accept people for some unknown reason. So I just wanted to come and share my support as an ally.
My name is Victoria Maddox. I live at five five six East High Avenue, apartment two, Belle Fountain, Ohio. I'm here to speak on what I've heard from the community members at the last city council meeting. There was negative outcry about some sexual performance in the parade. And quite frankly, I would love to know what parade they went to because it sure wasn't the parade here in Belle Fountain. Now, I know so many people see drag queens and instantly make about sex, but that isn't the case at all. Drag is a work of art. It is no different than a theater performance or concert. In fact, let me give you some facts. High heels were invented by men for men. King Louis the Ninth introduced red high heels with red soles for the French courts. Leggings were for men until the nineteenth century. In ancient Egypt, men and women wore makeup to enhance their appearance. It wasn't until the sixteen-sixties that women were allowed to perform in theater productions, and stage fear was being performed in the fifteen-nineties. So men dressed up as women and performed as women. The history of drag is a long one. The only thing new with it is how good they look now. And of course, the abysmal bigotry and hatred that has grown from people fearing what they don't understand. They want to say that this is a small town and that this doesn't belong in the small town. You know what I think of when I think of small town? Community. Look at this community. This is what small town is. It is community coming together for what we believe in. Drag is a form of artistic expression, and artistic expression is protected under the First Amendment as a form of speech. And I encourage you not to make any sordid moves against this community or attempt to prevent them from participating in any future events as it would be violating their First Amendment rights. If you ignore what we are saying here today, if you choose to follow the fear, the hatred, and the bigotry, I'm telling you now, I'm running against at least one of you on that council. And I'm a force taking your power and changing the culture of this community.
Good evening. My name is Langston Hatch. I live at nineteen-seventeen Denbridge Way, Canal Winchester, Columbus, Ohio, four three two one five. I come to you as Maya Business today. I'd please if you would urgently use that name. That is the name I give people, and that is the name that I just like. It's my sister's name, so it holds a lot of sentimental value. Excuse me if I get a bit emotional today, standing in front of a roomful of people that I do not know that well, speaking about something so personal in a passionate mind that does more harm to my bank account than it could ever do to a community. Not something I expected to do when I chose to view this superior. I find that growing up, it's hard to dislike a person when you do not know them. And in an effort to build strong community connection, I would like to tell you all a little bit about the man behind Maya, Langston. I'm a twenty-four-year-old man. I was raised in a single-parent household with a deaf and autistic sister. I was also raised by a doctor of theology and an international-level minister's lives president. I knew that at a young age, growing up around the beautiful black women that I did, that they have power. Seeing my mother put on her makeup every Sunday morning, seeing my grandmother put on her crown, her wig, and her church hat, that I wanted to have that power too. So little Langston would sneak upstairs, put on his grandmother's wig and earrings, and dance in the mirror to Whitney Houston on his Walkman CD player. Not the tape cassette, because I'm twenty-four, sorry. It's in those moments that when I'm feeling down as an adult, I remember. When I'm feeling lost, I think, "What would younger me think about the adult me today?" Most of the time, I think he'd love everything from the wigs to the big oversized earrings to the shoes in his size. However, it's also in those moments that I remember the feeling of getting caught, feeling shame for something that I could not control or just doing what came natural to me. It made it hard to be honest with myself. I hid. I worked. I'd use every aspect of my day to hide, from working in the church as a musician, singing in the choir, directing creative ministries. I worked for multiple churches. I dated an amazing young woman for almost four years. But that little boy in a wig in the bathroom wanted to come out of the bathroom. During the pandemic, I learned that life is too short. So I took my sister's name, Maya, and I became Maya Business. Since then, being my authentic self has opened so many doors. I've worked with the Jim Henson Company on both projects that are family-friendly and of the adult variety. I've done drag in over four different states, and my life has been enriched by so many beautiful people, including the beautiful people of Belle Fountain, Ohio. The awful things said about drag queens hurt me because I am not that. I am a brother. I am a friend, and I am a son. I love the people that I get to-- I'm blessed enough to engage with after a show, to hug them, to hear their stories, and make them smile with my performances. Growing up in the church, I sung a song, "Jesus loves the little children, all the little children of the world. Red and yellow, black and white, they are precious in His sight. Jesus loves the little children of the world." Jesus loved little Langston, and He doesn't love me any less because I choose to use my light to enrich other people's lives by doing something as harmless as drag. Before you judge myself and other drag entertainers, please understand that I personally am doing this for little Langston. Thank you for your time.
Glad to come all the way from the back. My name is Logan Boggs, Logan Lake County. My address is five hundred Gun Town Road, apartment T-three, here in Belle Fountain. I grew up in West Liberty. I'm trying to project for the people in the back. I grew up in West Liberty, and I live here now. And for years, I, like some of the stories we've heard, I wrestled with myself, and I hated myself because I didn't like who I was. And I didn't know what other options were. For years, I self-harmed. I have scars all over my body, and some inside. I could show you later. And it was for these reasons, because I didn't want anyone else growing up and thinking this way, feeling this way. That's why I ran the first pride parade in the county in West Liberty back in nineteen. And why I'm going to do another one this year in cooperation with our friends at the Olive Tree and with Extending the Branch. No one is interested in turning straight kids gay. All we want is for gay kids to live to be gay adults. That is all.
My name is Kelitha Hoag. I live at three oh eight West Nuduski, Word Three A. I knew that one before I came in here.
I'm sorry. Ben, what was your name again?
Kelitha Hoag.
Can you spell that first name for me?
I was born and raised in this town. I was born in that hospital down that road. I went to Belle Fountain my entire life. Ninety-eight percent of the people that I went to school with that are LGBTQ no longer live in this community. Why? Because of the bigotry. The way that we treated them, the way they grew up, they had to escape to Columbus, to Chicago, to all these big cities where people would love them. We stopped doing that a long time ago. Tyler brought the bar to town. I stand here as an ally. I go in there as an ally because they need somewhere to hang out. They need friends. They need to know that people like me exist in this town. It's not just the people with their bibles and they're trying to tell them they're sinning and they're doing all that. I'm hoping we do not pass any laws about dancing downtown because I will footloose downtown. I'll go down there and I'll say I can't do that dance. I'm going to go do it. The thing is, we've lost so many valuable people that are my friends that no longer live here. Their doctors, their lawyers, their nurses, their teachers. And they moved out of this town because of the bigotry they felt in this town. And we need to stop that. We need to not make any rules saying that Blonde Vanity can't be in the parade. There's no difference than me putting a hat on and my work coat on and my steel toe boots walking down the road where I look like a man, and I've been called sir before. There's no difference than me looking like that than her dressed up like that. There really isn't. And I'm just urging you guys, please do not make any rules because it's going to devastate me. My friends that no longer live here are outraged about this. Please don't. That's all I have to say.
Is there anybody else in the audience that seeks to address council?
Hello. My name is Zachary Pope. Address six zero two three Hampton Corner, South Hillier, Ohio. Today, I'm coming to you as a retebale. And ever since I was six years old, I watched RuPaul's Drag Race when it came out in two thousand and nine. I am one of, if not the, most youngest drag queen in Columbus, Ohio. It wasn't until I saw Blonde Vanity at Axis nightclub that inspired me to start doing drag. Drag is an art form. I was inspired by her dancing, her makeup, and wig styling, and I wanted to do that for myself. Drag is nothing more than that than putting on a show for people's entertainment. That's all I can say.
Hi, I'm Julie McManus. I live at twenty-three sixty-eight County Road One Thirty. I grew up in a large family, went to Catholic church every week, feeling like a freak and thinking there was something wrong with me. I knew I was different, and it was very comfortable for me. And I dated boys, and I tried to do all the right things. And it wasn't-- and the self-loathing that I had for myself, thinking that I was some sort of freak and that I was some sort of weirdo because I liked girls and not guys, was just horrifying to me. I've been with my wife now for thirty years. We're celebrating our thirty-year anniversary this year. And I finally, once I was in college, I met someone who was gay for the first time. And I'm like, "Wow, this is a thing? You can actually like women?" And so I felt it was freeing for me, and it was important to me. And as we moved from state to state, things became better. And we've settled in Belle Fountain. We're established in Belle Fountain. And then to have what happened last week and the blowback, I don't want any little kid-- I tried to deny my sexuality. I tried to be how I'm supposed to be and be with boys, but I was living a lie, and I don't want any kid ever to have to live that lie. It's not right, and please don't make those kids self-harm. Don't make those kids feel like they have to be something other than they are. I tried to fight it. I couldn't. And I don't want whatever you guys decide to make some little kid think that they're some sort of freak because I grew up that way. And it's not right. And how you decide and what you tell these little kids growing up and what you tell these young people growing up here is going to put them back in that box and make them feel like freaks. And I'm begging you not to do that. It's just not right to do to people. Thank you.
Hello, council. How are y'all? Hello, my name is Ishmael Cody Hargell. I reside at one six five nine East Sycamore Street, Columbus, Ohio. I'll be brief. My name is Ishmael, but many residents of your city know me as Reese S. Pieces. I have the distinct honor of serving as one of the show directors at the Olive Tree. My connection to Belle Fountain though stems well before that. My generations of my family grew up coming to YMCA Camp Wilson, and that tradition is something that I held so dear that I ended up becoming one of the directors of YMCA Camp Wilson, where I worked to serve thousands of youth, including hundreds of Belle Fountain youth. So when I speak about Belle Fountain, I know a little bit of what I'm talking about. I am-- I'm sorry. There we go. I grew to love this town. I always knew it to be one of love and of acceptance and of encouragement. So you might imagine my surprise when an organization and an individual that I personally know to hold those same values became the target of so much scrutiny. It has been said by members of this community that including a demographic of people that make others feel seen is promoting quote-unquote metropolitan values. If making people feel seen means that, I'll be glad to hold those values. It has been suggested that having drag be a visible part of this community, that by having drag be a visible part of this community, that we are promoting indecent behavior. If sitting on a float and waiting to spread cheer in a sad and broken world during the Christmas season is indecent behavior, then it is my preferred behavior. Council members, I stand before you to attest that not only is drag important, it is vital. As a matter of fact, drag saved my life. I was at the lowest point in my life when I discovered drag, having just lost my father figure, my job, being on the verge of homelessness, and without a friend in the world. This art form lifted me out of the deepest depression that I have ever known. There are some who wish to make this debate about religion and morals and value and godliness, but like a recent speaker at a previous meeting, I too believe in God. I too go to a Bible-believing church. And the God that I worship and the Bible that I read tells me that it is our job as Christians to accept one another as Christ accepted us and to encourage one another and build each other up. Council members and community, we are here because there are LGBT community members in this city and in this room right now that do not feel encouraged and that do not feel lifted up. The main website on the city of Belle Fountain has a slogan that reads, and I quote, "The city of Belle Fountain is a busy and beautiful small community that looks to combine the traditions of yesterday with the progress of today and tomorrow." Council, we're seeing a whole lot of the traditions of yesterday and not a lot of, and not much of the progress of today and tomorrow. Either you as an elected body mean that and take that slogan to heart, or it needs to come off of the website I'm being on. So now we turn to you and say that as elected leaders in this city, you have a choice. You can stand up to make sure that the LGBTQ residents feel just as supported and welcomed as other residents, or will you stand idly by, or as some residents prefer, the city to stand still in time? This is not just about whether or not you should allow drag queens in a parade. This is about whether you, as an elected body, have the courage to make sure that every resident and employee in this city feels like they belong. This is an urgent matter because in the words of President Barack Obama, "Change will not wait for some other person or some other time." We have the change that we have been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. So now we turn to you and say that you have a choice. You can stand up to make sure that the LGBT residents of this city feel just as supported and welcomed as other residents, or you can stand idly by. For some, this may not be an urgent matter, but for these entertainers and I, this is a matter of life and death. Time is ticking. What decision will you make? Thank you, council.
Hi, Kate. Hi, my name is Caitlin Roby. I live at 816 Cooper Avenue. Um, I just wanted to state real fast, I've, I've worked in education for a number of years, specifically taught fourth graders, and we greatly underestimate kids. Greatly underestimate them. I know that one of the biggest things that, as far as us underestimating them is the amount that they can love and understand. So the best thing that I can say as far as if we want to fight the bigotry where this, everything is concerned here, is to not appease parents who are pushing the bigotry. Kids, there are a number of kids who looked at that flow in the parade and understood what it was and didn't care. They, they had no opinion of it. It's a man wearing women's clothing. It's drag. Like, many of them could identify it. Many of them said she was beautiful. I was walking beside her during the parade, and a number of children told her she was beautiful, how great she looked, they loved to see her. And so you have the kids who love and understand and are accepting, and then you have the parents who are fearful, and they're basing it on something they don't understand. So if we want to squash that bigotry, we do so by not appeasing parents. So I'm, again, like everyone else, urging you not to do anything or put any kind of stipulation out there that limits what kinds of things can and cannot be in a parade. Because even in some of the other things I've seen people post from other cities, she still qualifies. Nothing that she was wearing is, goes against any of those other rules either. So it's absolutely pointless. But the only way that you're going to have a new generation coming up that's going to be accepting is by squashing it where it starts. Because they're gonna keep parroting what their parents are saying unless they see a bigger entity squashing all of that hate. So, thank you.
My name is Chris Hilgret Blair. I'm 62 years old. I was born and raised in this town. I went to Belle Fountain High School.
Well, I'm sorry, sir, what's your address?
Oh, 104 North Main Street, Belle Fountain, Ohio.
Thank you.
And I went to Belle Fountain High School, and I was a person who was called faggot, homo, beat down, battered. I was raped by a schoolteacher here. When my parents finally realized I was gay, they threw me out. So I lived on the street. I was raped there also. But I got my way back. I was strong. You know how many kids don't do that? You know how many kids commit suicide? They're on the streets selling themselves. You don't want that for your kids. I found my way back to church. I go to church here in Belle Fountain, I'm a council member. And I married my husband. We've been married for 10 years, together for 28 years. You're talking about family value. How many divorces do you see every day? I've been with my husband for 28 years. Also, I want to let you know that I was a drag queen for 30 years. I may not look it now because I'm a little old. Instead of patting up, jabbing a poosh up, hit. If you have any idea of these costumes, there's so much patty and hose and dance skins. There's no way you're gonna see anything, let alone where they tuck it. I just want to let you know, I'm from Belle Fountain, I'm here, I'm proud, and you cannot revert to hatred that I grew up with. Thank you.
Hello, council, my name is...
I'm sorry, ma'am, sir, I'm sorry. Sir, what was your last name?
Could you spell it?
Could you spell your last, yeah?
Hilgret Blair, H-I-L-D-R-E-T-H-C-A-L-B-L-A-I-R.
I'm sorry, just a moment. Okay, sorry, thank you, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nevin Malott, that's N-E-V-I-N-M-A-L-O-T-T. I reside at 175 Salem Horn Place, Apartment B, Columbus, Ohio. When growing up, I never saw any sort of representation for the LGBT or queer community. It wasn't until I started venturing outside of my small town to either Cincinnati, Dayton, or Columbus, I began to see people like myself, and I began to see people like myself represented and celebrated for the first time. I finally felt part of something and seen for the first time in my life as well. I know there are queer people that live here, and they want this kind of visibility. I also know what it's like for if you exclude these queer places for these individuals of your town. December 2014, I lost my best friend Leah Alcorn to suicide because her family and her friends did not accept her for being a woman, and she walked in front of a semi-truck, thus ending her life. As a drag queen in the LGBT queer community, I feel it's my duty to stand on the front lines for these kinds of issues and speak out and fight for these marginalized groups that don't, that feel excluded, unwanted, and unacceptable. What Tyler Berry has done over in the Olive Tree to create a safe LGBT space for these queer people in your community, they finally feel seen and celebrated. Being able to see people similar to myself authentically represented helps LGBT and queer youth validate their experiences, and it fosters a society in which these people can feel comfortable to be their true selves. We're not trying to take away any of your values that you guys hold dear to your city. We're not trying to corrupt or groom any children. We're just merely trying to create spaces of safety and love for your queer individuals and gay individuals that live in your town already that otherwise feel on the outside and are told to hide their gayness or tone it down. People need to talk about LGBT and queer people and see them properly represented without all the hateful comments or backlash. Because outside of this town, there are tons of people just like us that will care and love for them. Just as a reminder, you don't have to fully accept us, but at least respect us. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that seeks to address council? This is your last call here. Seeing no one else approach the lectern, that will conclude the communications from citizens portion of our meeting. We're glad to hear from all of you. It was 17 by my count, and I think that's been a record under my watch, at least since we had a big dust-up about the parking spaces. With that, we're gonna conclude our meeting. We just have two small things to take care of here, and then we'll adjourn. Is there any communications from the clerk?
None for me, thank you.
Are there any communications from members of council? Seeing none, I entertain a motion and second to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. DeSouma.
Hey, Seb?
Any questions?
Sorry, I changed.
I know.
Of course not.
Did you practice?
I was like...
Did you practice?
He does though. He does though.